I called the Monday, February 25th, 2019 work session of Portsmouth City Council to order. Adam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Elizabeth Burr?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Sumis?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Dr. Patton?
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, during the February 11th public work session, I presented the FY 2020 budget strategic initiatives that are uniquely aligned with the city's vision to continue the progress toward a more prosperous, lifelong learning, safe, and friendly city. And the city council's big four themes: Portsmouth, the best place for business; Portsmouth, the best place to live; Tell the Portsmouth Story; and Lifelong Learning. The presentations over the next four public work session topics will relate to the preparation of the FY 2020 budget. On Tuesday, February 19th, we hosted the first virtual budget presentation. We have a total of 186 virtual engagements as of today. With the rapid pace of technology enhancements and integration, this format has warranted enhanced citizen engagement that over the past three years of the community budget engagement meetings have not realized. Tonight, we will continue with the FY 2020 budget presentations for your consideration. The first will be FY 2020 workforce development. Workforce development is a key initiative in the current FY 2019 budget, which we plan to continue this initiative into the FY 2020 budget and beyond. Mrs. Elizabeth Gooden, Human Resource Management Director, will present components of internal workforce development. Mr. Robert Moore, Director of Economic Development, will present the external workforce development of economic development. Through these initiatives, we're working to make Portsmouth the best place for business, Portsmouth the best place to live, and ensure lifelong learning to build economic viability and prosperity in the city of Portsmouth. The second presentation, Public Utilities Capital Projects. Mrs. Cheryl Spivey, Chief Financial Officer, will provide a brief update on the city's current public utility capital project status. Finance and public utility staff over the past six months participated in the CIP cleanup, the results of which makes possible the real-time reporting of each project's financial expenditures. As staff proceed with the FY 2020 Public Utilities Capital Budget, we will come back to you with recommendations for reprioritizing a few projects that are in the current CIP, which start dates of a few years out before starting, and funds that may be designated for a project where the direction has changed. The third presentation, the FY 2020 Recreation and Museums Facilities Review. Over the past two fiscal years, City Council, you've received assessments of various recreation and municipal facilities. Tonight, Mr. James Wright, City Engineer, will lead you in a discussion on Recreation and Museums Facilities' next steps. We continue to present it with challenges of maintaining aged buildings with significant recurring and costly maintenance needs. With tonight's discussion, I'm looking for direction and where possible concurrence on the recommendations to move forward with noted facilities. The fourth presentation is the 2020 Review of Fees and Rates. Mrs. Gloria Washington, Budget Officer, will provide benchmarking data utilized from the review of rate and fee considerations for the upcoming FY 2020 budget process. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends the following best practice, which the city adheres to, and have staff annually review fees and rates with the development of the operating budget to cover all a portion of the city's expense providing their services. This presentation complies with the recommended practice. And lastly, City Attorney Solomon H. Ashby will brief you on the Amada Hoffler Properties LLC memorandum of understanding and the wireless franchise agreement appearing on tomorrow night's City Council agenda. Mrs. Gooden.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, we're pleased tonight to discuss our workforce development plan. Your Human Resource Management Team has four strategic objectives that we are looking to enhance the economic development of the city. They are talent acquisition and retention, professional development, benefits and compensation, and wellness and safety. Our emphasis on talent acquisition will include the expansion of our fellowship and internship program that will include an apprenticeship program to assist us with the cultivation of future talent in some critical positions across the nation. Some of the most critical ones that we're finding some difficulty in filling are actually our skilled workers, also commonly known as blue collar workers, and our 911 dispatchers. The United States is currently experiencing what's considered or called a blue collar drought, and these positions were once the backbone of the U.S. economy, and they have grown increasingly hard to fill. While technology has taken the lead in many organizations in the United States, employers are still having challenges finding H-Stop workers, electricians, and plumbers to do the work that has not been impacted by technological changes. There was a 2018 report by Deloitte and the Manufacturing Institute that projects that between 2018 and 2028, there could be as many as 2.4 million unfilled manufacturing jobs, which is estimated to have a $2.5 trillion negative impact in the economy of the United States. Another one of the challenges that we all have, most parents these days, they're encouraging their children to pursue college degrees, and that's something that a lot of people are going to do in today's economy. But today's economy doesn't always mean that a college degree is going to give you a professional, secure, well-paying job. Another challenge we have with our skilled workers has to do with skills training. As a result, we're going to pursue partnerships with public and private schools to cultivate specialized skills training to help meet the needs of our local businesses and also the needs of the city. We're looking to become part of a network of employers using what's called an earn and learn model that combines work-based learning with classroom instruction. In addition, we propose to develop our youth career programs, to offer summer jobs and some after-school work to assist the future generations to consider the public sector as a future employer. The Human Resource Management Team, as we know, as we look and we look to be financially prudent, we're going to be exploring some grants that actually use to help us, that we can put our youth to work that's commonly being done in our regional area. With respect to professional development, professional development is a continuum of lifelong learning, and we want to be able to ensure our employees are prepared for future opportunities with the city. More importantly, one of the most questions we're commonly asked at many of our interviews applicants want to know, what type of professional development programs do you have, or what type of trainings do you have that's going to help me enhance my skills? And we're here to please to tell you that we're here to answer that. We have many different types of programs that we offer. In fiscal year 2019, we launched our Global Leadership Academy for employees to have some leadership and managerial experience, and we also introduced our Emerging Leadership Academy for employees who want to learn more about leadership and preparation for future opportunities. Both these leadership academies, we actually have professionals come in and train. They train on some various topics. They've done values and ethics, lessons in leadership, critical thinking, communication, diversity and inclusion, local government financial management, critical conversations, strategic planning, and emotional intelligence. We're also going to continue one of our most, actually even surprised us, when we debuted a lot of our professional development programs, when we launched our Supervisor Boot Camp, we filled all four classes, and basically it was about five hours. We posted it through Port City, through our Deputy City Manager. We got such a great response, we actually had a wait list. We got a lot of good feedback. What that training, the boot camp was, was really just four weeks. Each day, Tuesday, we did a four-hour training on professional, excuse me, performance coaching, team building, workplace wellness, workers' compensation, and also we did one on employment law. To build on our past successes in fiscal year 2020, we plan on debuting a performance coaching series for both employees and supervisors to discuss promotion strategies, how to plan and develop new skills, and ensure an effective employee and supervisor feedback. With respect to benefits and compensation, the city's focused on the employee needs, and we want to assist our employees with our health and wellness solutions that give us a competitive edge in retaining and hiring the best qualified employees. As we continue to provide our employees with competitive compensation and benefits, we must also look to strategies to mitigate cost. One of the ways we're looking to control our costs is really through our pharmacy program. One of our things, currently our pharmacy program is integrated into our health insurance program. We are actually going to be looking for fiscal year 20 to actually consider doing what something's called a pharmacy carve-out, where you actually carve out and you actually put your pharmacy program out to bed for a pharmacy manager to actually bid on. Most organizations who have embarked on using some type of pharmacy management or pharmacy carve-out have saved considerable dollars as far as their pharmaceutical cost. In addition, we're going to continue our commitment to wellness by offering a variety of wellness programs to address physical, financial, social, and emotional well-being of our employees to work in alignment with our workplace. This slide here, currently the city spends approximately about $20 million on our health insurance plans, and what the graph show you here is pretty much our four-year policy trends. Here, you're going to see 2015, 2016, 17, and 18. Keep in mind that while the city manages its finances on a fiscal year, we do our benefits on a calendar year. And you can actually see some of the changes as we've experienced there. You'll see where we had a little bit of a spike in our claims per employee per month. That was really due to some high claimants actually that we had. One thing you also see, we also had a pretty considerable drop in 2018. Pretty much those observations are really a result of pretty much our active management of our plan, and also as we made some significant plan management, plan design changes. Prescription costs, which you actually see in yellow for 2018, are approximately about 4.7% lower than in 2017, and our prescription costs represent about 29% of our total claims paid in 2018. In addition, our enrollment pretty much has remained stable since removal of our post-65 retiree population, and we've pretty much had a change of less than 7% since 2016. It's important to note that as we look at our health insurance plans, as everyone knows from a procurement standpoint, we have to go out to bed. So this year, all of our plans will be going out to bed. It'll be our medical, our dental, flexible spending accounts, our vision, our legal resources, and also we'll also be putting one other out there that we have is our Legal Resources Plan. We also anticipate with that, we're doing that in collaboration with our benefits consultant, which is Willis Towers. So we're hoping to really get some really good responses there.
Excuse me. We are self-insured, though, for health insurance?
That is correct.
It's these other ancillary insurances that you're providing?
Yes. Yes. So for everyone, for our health insurance, which is really consists of our medical plan, we're self-insured. We are also self-insured for our dental plan, our dental PPO. We found, let's see, it's 2019. I want to say in 2017, through working with our dental provider, we were actually able to experience a much lower cost by actually being self-insured. We actually found out, I'd have to get back to the actual dollars, as far as a plan. Of course, every plan wants to make money. We were trying to consider money back over to our dental provider, and the suggestion was for us to actually be self-insured.
Who manages the two? My company manages the two plans, processes claims?
For dental?
For both.
For dental, it's Delta Dental of Virginia. For our medical, it's Optima Health. Yes, sir.
What percentage of your claims are pharmacy-related?
Pharmacy-related, pretty much, almost about 30%. We have some very high claim utilization, sir. Some of it, if I could say, we have high claimants that probably anywhere about, maybe about $120,000 of their claims cost is pharmaceutical.
And the reason why I ask that question, I'm sure you guys are aware, the city of Chesapeake did something similar, the public schools did, with their pharmacy. They carved out their pharmacy, and they did a whole different deal with that. And the benefit of that, quite frankly, not only is it millions of dollars in savings by carving it out, but it also is a benefit to the employees and the retirees who purchased those prescription drugs.
That is correct.
That's where she's proposing.
Yeah. We've done a lot of good things. I'll say this, in 2017, while you'll also see a drastic reduction in 2018, we made some changes on our pharmaceutical lines that basically estimated, saved us a little bit of over about $2 million. We started doing something different, was actually our Optima, of course, who manage our health insurance plan, they were actually getting the rebates that you would get with some pharmaceutical companies. We changed our contractual arrangement, so we currently now actually get those rebates. So any of the rebates that typically a medical plan or health insurance plan would get, we currently get those back, turned to us, to the city, and they go back into our health insurance fund that helps us offset our costs.
And a last point I want to make on that, please. Just so you know, when Chesapeake did it, their pharmaceutical claims were 24%.
Yes.
Phil, are there any plans to collaborate with the school system?
Yes, sir. I'll say this, yes. We actually, when I first came back to the city, that was one of the things I believe that council wanted us to look into. We started going down that road with the schools. Basically, what we could find, and to answer your question, yes, we definitely need to continue to explore it a little bit further. Mostly what we tend to hear back from the consultants, because they're both self-insured, as you know, being self-insured, we're all going to just be paying claims. The biggest financial advantage that we could get by collaborating with the schools is really going to be on our administrative costs by having a larger pool of employees. That's something we can definitely still consider.
I was thinking, since you go into market on prescriptions, that that would be a good opportunity to see if it's some interest on their part. I saw a hand over here.
Well, Shannon brings up a point about the nonprofit pharmacy in Chesapeake, and I know we've had those discussions for quite a while now. And, you know, it's good to have Shannon here because his expertise in this area. And I know we've had, you know, some of our budget meetings Lisa and I were in, and one of the last, I believe it was last year during the budget meeting, we discussed, and I guess we were still waiting on a report back from that information. And I know we had talked, there was a possibility of trying to work with, you know, the health department or somebody to try to merge the pharmacies since they already had a pharmacy. But I don't know if we're, are we still looking at that, or?
We are still looking at that. I would probably say to you, by carving out our pharmaceutical benefits, it's going to give us a greater advantage to actually do that. When you have it more so embedded in your program, that's something that Optima manages. So when we, for lack of a better word, when we take control of it, it'll give us better options to do what we need to do. So, Councilman, it is in alignment with what you've asked us to do.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Good job.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, when we first looked at 2016 to work with the school system, they were under a three-year contract, and we were not under a contract. So they could not do any discussion in regard to looking to collaborate or combine. So in 19 now, they should not, they should be where that contractual arrangement is over, and there could be further discussion. But Mrs. Gooden has been working with their HR person to try to move this conversation on further.
Be good to get an update on how that's progressing.
We shall.
Excuse me, we've been beating that drum for probably 10 years.
At least three with them.
I know Shannon when it comes to benefits, but I know that it's bound to cost less to do anything for 4,000 people than it does for 2,000. I mean, that's just common sense.
Right. We'll move forward.
Man, go ahead.
Yes, sir. This slide here is pretty much representative of pretty much what you're going to see nationwide as far as healthcare costs. It's going to actually show you, what you're going to see in purple are your healthcare after-plan changes, your total plan cost. Your blue trend line is going to tell you your kind of before and after, and your CPI is your Consumer Price Index. We are pretty much, as it relates in target with the market, we're pretty much right there. While our overall, prior to us, status quo renewal, before we made any plan changes, we probably had a renewal rate of about 12%. But once we did a lot of our plan changes, we actually got our increase down to 5%. So we're right in line with the national trends. I just thought this is really good to see as far what's going on in the nation, and we're right there in making sure that we are keeping up with everyone else. Benefits and compensation, as we say always, with respect to compensation, we're evaluating the city's position relative to the regional market. Our goal is to make sure that we have entry-level salaries that are able to attract employees, and we also want to have the compensation strategies to retain qualified employees. One of the things, as you know, over the past fiscal years, we have made some adjustments to keep up with some of the competition. As you know, previously, we've made adjustments for our public safety to include our 911 dispatchers that we did in last fiscal year. We're also continuing with our emphasis on the living wage with employees making less than $30,000 annually. I believe when this issue, when this issue came up before, we probably had about 151, 153 employees who were making less than $30,000. I can tell you, as of today, we're down to 84. So we've made some strides with that. How we've made strides, of course, we've done a living wage adjustment, and also what we make sure is we try to do something, you don't, as you're trying to correct something, you want to make sure you're not bringing in people that you're going to have to go back and correct. So we make sure that as we're hiring new employees, that we keep that living wage actually in mind.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, when we look at, looking at benefits and compensation, I was talking with the chief today, there had been, and we will, I'll bring it up in our city managers and city administrators meeting, there was some kind of, just not written rule, that you wouldn't approach city employees in other cities and try to get them to come to your city, for whatever reason. But what we're having now is that cities are reaching out to employees and saying, I'll give you $3,000 more than what you're making here. And we're finding that in public safety, a little more than, over the years that I have been here. So we're very much aware of it, and we're really looking, and I'm going to be speaking with some city managers in that regard.
Shannon.
Ms. Gooden, I'm sure as a part of that, you guys are doing annual benchmarking on what similar organizations of your size and what you do are doing in terms of compensation?
Yes. Currently, what we do, all of the regional cities in this area, we're all a member of a group, we actually all share data, and we meet regularly to just kind of discuss trends and look at different things to make sure we're staying current. Of course, we do that. Of course, as you know, there's a lot more that goes into doing classification and compensation analysis. So what we do to make sure that we don't have any outliers, we actually have benchmarks for the positions, that we make sure that when we're talking about a civil engineer, we're looking at these basic qualifications. Because as you know, in human resources and classification, you can call a job anything, but it's a matter of what the duties are. So yes, sir, we are doing that.
Other questions? I have a question about compression. How's our compression now?
Also?
If it's, if we have a problem, what departments do we have the problem?
If we had a problem with compression, I would probably tell you, there's going to probably be a little bit throughout the city, the places where you're going to see a lot more of your compression, more so than anything else, is going to be some of your professional level jobs and also some of your larger groups. So any type of job where you're going to have a lot of employees is going to be your public safety. You're going to see some in your social services positions wherever you have a large group of concentrated employees in the same classification. When we did our salary adjustments, I believe that was fiscal year 17. When we made our public safety adjustments in fiscal year 17, we made sure that, as you remember, we transitioned off the staff system. One of the things that, again, we listened to what you asked us to do, and when we did our analysis, we made sure that we didn't create compression. So we really came up with a nice little formula, we examined it to make sure, as we got people off, it was relative to the amount of time they were in their positions. So I don't think we're going to see too much. I think one of the areas where we're going to probably really just need to do is really consider to look at our entry-level salaries in that regard. And then what we also do in some jobs, if we do have something, if we think there's going to be a little bit of areas of compression, if it's something that we can fix as it relates to internal equity, we do work with the city manager to see if we can get some of those areas actually taken care of.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Talking about the compression and talking about looking at the entry-level salaries, if you increase the entry level, that's really what creates the compression. And, you know, as a previous 20-year employee of the city, I see how that exactly works. But for example, two years ago, the state police received a raise. It was $6,793 per person across the board, no matter the rank, and that prevented any compression at that point. Well, we consider doing something like that, because if we increase the entry level and don't give it anybody that's got time and grade already, they will start being compressed immediately when that's done.
Sure. Let me explain to this one. When we did public, yes, that is something we do. Anytime you increase any entry-level salary, you don't do anything to existing employees, you are going to keep, create compression. When we looked at fire and police and we took them off that schedule, we literally made sure that we took the time to look at the officers. Once we increased the entry, we took the effort to really make sure we pushed everybody down the line to make sure that we didn't create compression in that regard. Some areas that also sometimes, when you're going to result in some type of compression, sometimes it's also going to happen after you do a promotional process. As you know, this has always been the adage, we've always said, depending upon how long a person stays in their position, when, you know, they get promoted, they're going to make more than if I, you know, stayed a half to three years, or whatever the case may be. So we're still going to have some of that, because that's just the nature of the work. But the one thing we don't try to do at any period of time is to make any type of significant increase in entry level or not do anything for existing ones.
And Mayor, when Mrs. Gooden mentioned entry level, what we found in around 2016
were that we had city, when we look at cost of life, of living wage, we had employees who had been here 17 and 18 and 20 years, and were making like 17 or 18,000 dollars. So that is where, as we've taken, had almost 200 employees, and now we're down to the number she said, we're looking at moving those who are not even at 25,000, trying to get them to where?
That's great.
Yeah. Well, you, this was something you wanted us to continue to do.
All right. Any more questions?
Before we get too far, I just something, I guess, talking about people being here 17, 18 years, posed a question in my mind, when the spike in the insurance went up and then went back down, is any of that related to employees who are 62 or older who may have gone to, what is it, Medicare insurance, 65, Medicare insurance and came off of the city? I don't know.
Actually, no. Actually, what that dip was in was actually some changes we made with our plan designs. We had some errors in the health insurance that we just needed to tighten up a little bit more, make sure there's some pre-authorizations. I would say this, one thing that's, I'll just speak to us, I'm not going to say it to any other city, but with our health insurance, for example, for this fiscal year, we probably had about, either about 12 to 14 high claimants, that if we didn't have those high claimants, I would have been able to tell Dr. Patton, there would have been no increase to our health insurance. A lot of our drivers, and that is going to be kind of what we're trying to really emphasize, wellness, it's going to be those lifestyle factors. You know, Dr. James has talked about, you know, the diabetes and high blood pressure that we have in this area. You're going to find that representative in some of our claims cost.
I might do a follow-up, and then I'll get you. Okay? Following up on the Vice Mayor's question, for those active employees who are 65 or older, do we require them to go to Medicare A and B?
No, sir.
We give, we let them stay on the plan?
We let them stay on, because, well, they're full-time.
Because they're full-time.
And what the CLB regulations say, as long as you're working your, yes, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, I just wanted to piggyback off of comment Dr. Patton made with regard to city employees and the new strategy or the failure to adhere to prior strategies. And I just want to make you aware of, my office, all of my attorneys received letters from another jurisdiction at the office for a position. Now, while I don't, I'm not of the opinion that someone will recruit my staff, to have an HR staff send letters to my office to all of our attorneys was a bit disturbing.
That's disgusting.
But that's what's happening.
Well, and that's, I can speak for my department.
I'll do one caveat. I don't do that. So there's no letters. Anybody trying to take anybody's employees, I will say that. But that is something that some of my peers actually do. I try to tell people, what we tend to sell our employees, or in our prospective employees, we sell them on the culture, we sell them on the opportunities to be promoted, to provide them with strategies. I can say, for a while, Ms. Tremere, we had some challenges with getting our water treatment plant operators. There was a point in time where, you know, we were kind of like, okay, we got to get some, we have to get some. And I will tell you, you know, through our efforts and some efforts of our staff, sometimes just other water treatment plant operators, talking to other people in the field, you know, and tell them, hey, you know, why don't you come over here, we're getting a new plant built. And I'll tell you, we've gotten some really good candidates, and even with that, they are moving forward and getting their water class licenses. So we've done pretty good in that regard.
Apologies, Chip. Your hand up.
I did have one more question in regards to the health and wellness. I mean, that's a big deal, and I agree with what you're saying. I know that, in looking at some of my data, some jurisdictions and organizations have gone to clinics. They've actually instituted clinics in their organizations, and with those clinics, the emphasis is on wellness and health and wellness, but more importantly, on helping those individuals with those active disease processes managed those. So real strong contingent- And, with those clinics, the emphasis is on wellness and, and, and health and wellness, but more importantly, on helping those individuals with those active disease processes manage those. So, real strong contingent of disease management. Do we have anything like that in place today?
We do have, I'll say this, we do have some disease management programs in place, none of them that are necessarily currently now in-house. A lot of what we're doing now is, I would say, more so strategic, like I said, doing the pharmacy carve-out, gain the wellness. As I told anyone, if you give someone a big shock, people tend to be a little bit more apprehensive, but that is something that we're looking to do. I actually, this little while ago, I worked for an H R department, and actually what we did, we employed a nurse and what we did to save people from, you know, leaving the audit, leaving the office, you know, you could come and bring, you know, your allergy serum, whatever was needed.
Right.
A little bit of that, sometimes what you might need is not necessarily go to a full-scale doctor, something that a nurse practitioner can take. So, I'll say this, I think strategically, we're making the right moves to get us in that direction with wellness. We're focusing on kind of partnering some of the things. What we did recently as it relates to diabetes is, which is one of our things, we actually had an internal disease management program of Optima and we're actually tracking them. We give them some incentives to make sure they go to their visits and do what they need to do. So, we are actively doing that. Anytime any of our employees or retirees or their dependents have any type of disease that can be managed, we are utilizing that.
Good.
But, we have, we must find a way to help educate our employees of the impact of insurance on the overall budget. With the program that Mrs. Gooden is speaking of, of which participating in that four-week, was it a four-week or six-week program? Four-week program, at the end of it, each person who completed it through the program would have gotten a hundred-dollar gift card. We only have five people in the whole city to participate and we could have had up to, the, the amount was $60,000, they would actually cover for city employees. We could have had 150 in the program, but we've got to find a way, we, to help our city employees understand that them being healthy helps the overall lifting of our city, as with the community, as we are, we all know that. So, we've got work to do internally.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, sir. So, we're here talking about wellness. One of the things we're looking for, kind of our last strategic area is wellness and safety. Our goal is to protect all of our employees for occupational injuries within their fields by promoting safety policies, plans and work practice procedures, directive of optimal safety of our workforce. We're looking to do a couple of different things. We're looking to actually have a Wellness and Safety Week, where we're going to focus on safety, trainings, tips, meetings, events, and tenant provider employees with kind of the knowledge, skills and abilities to lead safe lives, both at work and at home. We're going to do some ergonomic things. We're also going to be introducing our Spring Into Safety Program, which is going to reintroduce the importance of workplace, workplace safety. Also pleased to kind of announce, we're going to be kind of creating the city's first comprehensive wellness and safety program. That's going to include doing some pre-planned inspections, so reoccurring and scheduled inspections, hazard assessments for work sites, job classification departments to ensure the safety of the citywide overall. As part of our Spring Into Safety campaign, we're going to be retraining our employees on kind of OSHA mandated training, such as, you know, occupational exposures, your blood bone exposures, office safety, personal protective equipment, emergency egress and evacuation. One hallmark of that is also, we're going to be making sure all of the record keeping documentation, which is paramount to any safety program, is always good in the case OSHA comes and wants to do an audit. We're going to make sure we have all that information and we're going to, you know, start electronic like we have all of our other files that we have. But, I think this is something that's really going to do very well for us here. You'd be surprised in really getting the awareness. Lots of times, individuals don't understand, something is a little bit of water on the floor, that could cause a slip. Most people might think it could be harmless. I can tell you from experience in exposure, that sometimes what we call a slip, trip and fall can cost you upwards of $120,000 if it's not managed correctly.
Correct.
If you don't, you know, follow up and do the things, and we need, you know, make sure everybody understands, you know, see some water, clean it up, put up the yellow signs and all those things. So, that's really going to help us too also.
To manage.
In summary, our future focus as far as our workplace development is going to be to attract and retain qualified, talented employees. We're going to continue to foster and promote professional development for succession planning. We're going to continue our partnerships with schools, colleges and businesses to enhance the human capital needs of the city. This concludes my portion of tonight's presentation on workforce development and I'll answer any questions if there are any more.
Any more questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Elizabeth in Dillonville.
Just a comment, when you talk about safety, I was stunned a month or so ago, since Christmas, I went to a company in downtown Norfolk, a large company, to give a travel talk. We're probably 100 people in the room. And, before we began, the safety person stood up and said, "Okay, who's going to be in charge today of the defibrillator?" Somebody raised their hand. Can somebody tell me where the closest two exits are? Somebody stood up, pointed. They said, "All right, John, you'll be in charge of the east door. Mary, you've got the west door." I mean, we went through this whole safety thing before I started talking.
Yes.
And I was like, wow, this is amazing.
It's one of the things we're looking to do. I remember when I worked in the city, you know, the first time, you know, we still have fire drills, you know, you had to get out, everybody had to go to your, your place.
Where's the staircase?
Where's the staircase? Somebody responsible for getting everybody down. It's one of the things we're just really getting back to in that regard, you know. I think unfortunately, a little bit about the culture, we need to do a little bit more, make sure the egress, we know where people need to go with defibrillators and, you know, making sure and keeping track. One of the things, I didn't mention it, but one of the other things that we'll be doing for our workplace safety, we'll be keeping track of those individuals who are trained in C P R, so we have that information readily available. It's, it's, it's good to know and, you know, like you say, our employees are, you know, our most important asset and we need to make sure we are taking all the measures we can to protect them.
I would be interested in getting more details as it become available on the summer youth program.
Okay.
Is, you know, for instance, is it going to be a shadow program where, you know, the non-hazardous professions, where you're going to have either one youth or one person shadow that person, or just how that's going to work? I just think it's so much in our city that they could be involved in, you know, especially the high schoolers, which is twofold, gets them occupied during the summer and also potentially helps us.
Prepare for the future.
Train some future employees.
Sure. One of the things, kind of gave you quick sense, we're looking to do some collaboration with the schools and guidance councils, just letting us in the careers we have, do some shadowing, some, you know, kind of work and learn and make sure we do that. One of the other things that's going to be part of that youth program is, is going to be some of the other life skills, making sure they know how to set up, you know, checking account, do some of the fiscal responsibility, as you tell everyone, or as I tell everyone, everyone at home doesn't get the same thing that you got about how to, you know, set up a checking account, how to balance your checkbook or manage your debit card, I guess, now. So, we'll be looking for some of that. I worked at another locality and we were successful in getting some grants to do it and partnering with businesses who also helped to collaborate. We were just kind of the, if you will, we were kind of the fiscal partner in that, everybody was on city's payroll in that regard, but we made sure that everybody got paid. And, it wasn't a lot of money, it was enough also to keep them busy and also what we were able to also do at the same time, as you know, sometimes with some youth during the summer, if you don't have anything to do, you don't, you know, you can find trouble around the corner, so we're hoping to, you know, keep them busy during the summer too. So, we'll, we'll find, so put you some more information as we get going.
Very good.
Mrs. Simms, you must have heard my conversation when Mrs. Gooden and Mr. Moore were reviewing. I said to them the exact thing as it pertains to safety. We need to know in any setting what we are to do, and I share it with them. If, if we are getting ready to do another drill in church, now, you never thought in church you would have to go, no, where do you go if this happens? And, so, two Sundays ago, we've already had one drill, we're going to do another. We need to know, make sure everybody, not just in this building, and I share it with them, all through the city that are part of municipal government, know what happens if this happens and who's in charge and how do we handle it? And, I wouldn't share that, when we had the tornado situation in 2017, we were all out and we were counting for everybody and then somebody said after 10 minutes had passed, "Where's the city clerk and her team?" They were in the building. They didn't even know we were outside the building. So, we have got to have a better plan and we will. And, we'll let you know what it is as we work it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr.?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. This evening, I will speak about workforce development from an economic development You may recall, this time last year, we talked about our economic development, our strategic plan, we talked about specifically workforce development. We focused on four things, making sure we had a better supply of, supply and demand for skilled labor. We want to make sure we increased our communication and collaboration with our workforce partners. We want to make sure we had a measurement system to make sure we're, we're meeting those markers and those milestones. And, as well, we needed to make sure we emphasized our market and industry drivers. Now, as Ms. Gooden stated, she is correct that for the next five to 10 years, we will have a serious decline in the availability of skilled, of a skilled workforce. And, so, for the portion of the discussion tonight, we will be focusing from an economic development standpoint on objective one, the focus of, in demand for skilled labor. When we talk about economic development and we talk about workforce development, we really have to focus on what many in the region consider to be our biggest asset, not just here in Portsmouth, but again, across the region, which is our citizens. We have a diverse group of individuals living in the city, working in the city. More specifically, you have within the region about 13,000 exigent military workers every year leaving the military, but about half of those stay here in Hampton Roads. So, we need to make sure there are opportunities for them, there are ways for them to better their skills, give them some additional opportunities. And, if we do that, we can look to enhance Portsmouth's economic stability, because again, we're going to give those citizens the ability to advance and grow and succeed in Hampton Roads. Now, the question is, how do we do that? Need to focus on three areas. We need to focus on pipeline development in our schools, much like Ms. Gooden spoke about, starting off with that summer program, starting all the way back in, in, in middle school, to be honest with you. We need to develop that pipeline. Need to upskill our underemployed workers. We need to better their skills, better, therefore, bettering their opportunities. And, then, we need to also have baseline skill training for the unemployed and the emerging candidates. And, why are these important? Again, because the pipeline development is a pathway for our middle school students, high school students and even the post-secondary to have some better opportunities when they graduate school. Upskilling gives our currently underemployed workers an opportunity to advance in their careers, maybe start a different career. Then, our baseline skills development will allow us to focus on some of those soft skills, a lot of things that sometimes are missed by some of our training programs. Now, this time last year, we talked about the initiative Hire Portsmouth, helping individuals reach employment. And, the focus of that was to really sit down and kind of set the table, if you will, for us to have a discussion with our public schools, workforce partners like Hampton Roads, Workforce Council, with our university partners like T C C and O D U, and to work with the employers. We have done those discussions, we have talked extensively with our employers, especially those that have expanded here recently, over the last year. We have worked with T C C and their opening of the building, Trades Academy, that they've opened on Airline Boulevard. We've had several discussions with Dr. Bracy and his team. And, of course, the Workforce Council stands by to assist us whenever we need them. But, I am pleased to, tonight, to discuss a different option that we have as well. When we talk about workforce development, we really need to look at a two-pronged approach, not just the citizens that we have that are looking for work or, again, underemployed, but we also need to make sure that our businesses have the opportunity to expand, create new jobs, and we have individuals that are ready to go into those positions as well. So, tonight, we are here to announce for F Y 20 and going into F Y 21, the creation of the Hire Portsmouth Center for Innovation in Workforce Development. This will be a location that fosters innovation and economic development by adding value and providing enrichment to our citizens and our businesses within the city of Portsmouth. Now, how will we do that? For our citizens, the center will provide workforce training, continuing education, online education and computer technology. For our businesses, we'll have an entrepreneurial incubator, meeting space, corporate training, as well as professional customer service. Now, when we talk about professional customer service, we're talking about a location where they can meet with the Small Business Administration, the Small Business Development Center, folks like that, SCORE and places like that, to help them with everything from expanding their workforce to as well, even writing a business plan. Now, we will do that in partnership, again, we're making all kinds of announcements tonight, but we will do that in partnership with the, with Hampton University and their university college. This will be their first university college and expansion of that program here on this side of the water. We are very excited to work with Dr. Lucas and her team of workforce development folks over there to help us bring together and collaborate on this center. We have targeted and looked at several different locations. The center can be anywhere from approximately 8,000 to up to 26,000 square feet, depending on the location we choose. But, with anything, there are always next steps. Part of that next steps is identifying funding options and opportunities. That would include leveraging some private investment. Certainly, we will work, work to nail down that location and as well, we will finalize the memorandum of understanding with Hampton University so that we can really get going on this project. We think that this project will again, serve two needs, the needs of our citizens and the needs of our, our businesses, which is why we are here in economic development. So, I stand for any questions?
What's the budget for it?
Well, at this point, again, we're looking at two different budgets. We'd have to look at the, the potential build out of a space and that depends, that's really going to nail that, we'll nail that down once we get to an actual space. We are working with Hampton University right now to look at the overall budget and how much this will cost. We are looking at funding opportunities. Is there an opportunity to potentially use C D B G or the Community Development Block Grant for this? That might be an opportunity. We're fleshing that out now.
When you think that'll be ready?
Well, the program itself, the M O U, we are literally working on it as we speak. I spoke to Mr. Dwayne Poe with Hampton just earlier this evening. We are looking to have this formalized hopefully by the summer, so we'll be ready to go so that once we find a space, identify the funding options, have the opportunity potentially to apply for the C D B G. I believe we've applied for that, maybe this year, but depending on how funding goes, may have to wait till next year, but, of our 2021, but we are looking at all opportunities. We are, we have the Workforce Council standing with us as well, ready to assist, so we're excited.
Couple of things, you're probably aware that the unemployment rate between 16 to 21-year-olds in the city of Portsmouth is 40%.
Maybe, huh?
So, there needs to be a sense of urgency in whatever we do. I understand these timeframes and timelines, but, but, but as I've heard amongst this table, and I'm one of the newer guys on the block, these things have been talked about before and that's certainly not a knock against you, Robert, I think you're doing an excellent job. But, the reality is, we have to get a sense of urgency and how are we going to measure where we are in this process? What, what is our measurement?
Well, the great thing about if we utilize the C D B G, for example, is we have to make sure we are helping a certain demographic. But, for us, it's going to be looking at how are we affecting that unemployment rate for that 16 to 25, 24-year-old? We have to make sure that we have the opportunities in place. Firstly, we have to make sure we know the baseline, what that number is, which we do, that 40%, and then we've got to look at what strategic plans can we do with Hampton to make sure that we are attacking specifically that? How are we working with our internal workforce partners in H R to make sure that we create that pipeline? How are we working with the schools to create that pipeline? Because it's not just the students, then you're also funneling into the parents and their opportunities as well.
Sure. Thank you.
And, I know you're looking at C D B G grant funds, but is this going to be something that will be sustainable for longer than the grant? Will it be able to regenerate any income on its own after a certain period of time? And, also, will Hampton be the only school we consider, because there's others, Norfolk State and?
There are several, there are several others that we, we are considering. We are looking at something that, yes, we will hopefully sustain. The way we're looking at, let's say, for example, if we have about a 10 to 15,000 square-foot facility, you have about half of that would be workforce development and then approximately half of that would be the entrepreneurial space. Is there an opportunity to, for all intents and purposes, prepare our businesses by allowing Is there an opportunity to, for all intents and purposes, prepare our businesses by allowing them to pay rent? They may not be paying utilities and things of that nature, but it teaches them to budget, because eventually you will be out of that space. We want you to circulate through. Um, so we are looking at opportunities to make that happen. Um, we have looked at and spoken to other cities that have done this, um, the city of Franklin, Southampton County, they have a true incubator, um, that is about 40,000 square feet. That is exactly what we do. We have sat down and met with them, um, and we love the opportunity to take counsel out there to see just our vision and what we, you know, what we anticipate. Certainly, there are other schools. We've worked with TCC and, uh, Mr. McCray, uh, Dr. McCray and his, um, Building Trades Academy. Um, we are working with, again, Hampton, Norfolk State, we are certainly looking to partner with them as well. Hampton just provided a unique opportunity, because they are doing this on the peninsula, um, and, and they have a curriculum that flows directly with what we're looking to do, so.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we will have the Public Utilities Department, Mrs. Spidey. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, I'll present the status of our Public Utilities. Okay. But I will call.
She's got hold of it.
She's good. Oh. Um, the Public Utilities currently has 34 projects that have remaining unencumbered balances. So that's, um, other projects that, um, have, um, you know, have not yet started, or projects that have started, and they've, um, spent and are encumbered all of their funds. The, um, the ones that have spent and are encumbered all of their funds, they're not included in the 34. So it's, um, active projects or projects that have not yet started. Many of the 34 projects, um, include?
I've got a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
When you sign the contract with a contractor for one of these projects, you, at that point, encumber the funds that are necessary to fulfill the contract?
That's right.
Right. So the 34 are projects in which we may not have a contract for?
They haven't started. There could be some projects that we don't yet have a contract for. So it's been, money's been appropriated, but, um, but it has not got to the point of, of having a construction contract yet.
But they haven't, they haven't started?
But they're, I mean, they're, they're, there are, and in Public Utilities, the way the projects are budgeted, um, they're budgeted, um, based on certain types of projects, not a specific project. So, um, when a specific project is, um, you know, it's determined what the specific project will be, um, then they become a, um, a sub-project, and they pay from the sub-project. Okay. The 34 does not include every sub-project. That's something we could change for our future reporting, um, if, you know, if that would be helpful.
But your 34 are projects in which there are funds not encumbered?
That's correct.
That's what I heard you say.
Yes, not, not, not totally, not totally encumbered.
Correct. But potentially encumbered, is that what you're saying?
They could be, they could have partial encumbrances. I mean, at the, of the, yeah, they could be, um, part of the project could be under contract with the next phase still left.
Okay, and that's the key point, because you have a, a three-phase project, and each phase is $100,000, but you take them as serials, series.
Right.
You sign the first contract, you encumber the entire $100,000. Okay, and so what you're saying is that there may be phase two and three, which you don't have contracts yet for, and they're not encumbered?
That is correct, and you have, you have the budget for it, but you don't yet have the contracts.
I don't understand the things you're saying.
So of, um, of, of those 34, and, um, and I, we want to emphasize that this does not include projects that have closed. So we've, we've taken for the project authorization, we've pulled that authorization out, because those projects are now assets. Yeah, that's, that's part of, you know, this project that, you know, that we've been doing for the last several months. So the, the, um, project authorization, um, for these projects is, um, about 257 million. The actual expenditures so far are around 13.6 million, leaving an unencumbered balance of 143.4 million. Of that amount, 30 mil, 30 million has already been encumbered, so that's encumbered but not yet spent, and, um, and that leaves an unencumbered balance of 113 million.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, uh, they, um, these, these projects are in large part funded with, um, bonds, and we have 160 million authorized and unissued bonds. 104 million of those were prior to '19, and, you know, just in fiscal '19, we added another 55.9 million to, um, to bring it to the 160. We issue our bonds based on cash flow. So how, um, based, you know, a DIRS gives us limitations on how long we can hold money that, um, that we've issued bonds for. Um, and it's a two-year, 18 to, 18 months to two years is, um, is a good, you know, safe projection. So, um, we've issued, we've, um, we're planning a bond sale for $45 million, um, at the end of this fiscal year. The last time I presented, there was a question of, uh, advantages of revenue bonds versus general obligation bonds. In the, um, in the past, the city has, for the most part, issued general obligation bonds. Uh, of course, general obligation bonds pledge the taxing authority of the city. Um, revenue bonds, um, pledge the revenue stream of the Water and Sewer Utility, you know, the utility that's being used, I mean, that's being financed. Um, in discussions with the city's financial advisor, Davenport, they're recommending that we move towards revenue bonds, so, um, because those bonds, again, are, um, the collateral on those bonds are the, is the revenue stream of the Water and Sewer Fund, um, and it does not, uh, those bonds then would not get included in the calculation of, um, our legal debt margin. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't go against the legal debt margin.
Correct. Don't hurt our bond rating.
So, no, it, what happens is that the Constitution says you can't issue bonds, general obligation bonds, greater than 10% of your SaaS value.
Okay.
But that's general obligations bonds. You could be at 10% and issue revenue bonds all day long, because the risk to the bond buyer is that the revenue's not gonna be there. There's no other pledge other than the revenue.
Tax consequence, the same for the buyer? Or is it different?
No, it's the same. It's, it's a tax-free bond, but it carries a higher risk.
Right.
That's, uh, what we, Renaissance Hotel, where revenue bonds?
I don't know.
As I recall. Probably issued through the IDA or the EDA.
Oh, the IDA during that time, yeah.
I, I bet no one remembers the last time that the city itself issued truly revenue bonds.
I haven't.
But it makes sense if it's for utility projects.
Oh, yeah.
It's great, it's great.
Yeah.
Who are usually the players in, um, bond, I mean, yeah, bond sales?
Bond buyers?
Bond, uh, yeah. He said he was gonna have a, a sale.
Yes, the, the investors are, um, there, there are what we call retail investors, which are people, people, and, um, and investment, um, companies. I mean, it would, like, if, if you have a 401K, if someone, if one of their bond people bought from us, they would be considered retail.
And typically, what happens is that the, someone will buy the issue, and then retail it to small investors like us.
Right. And, uh, so, and then there, uh, but also, um, you know, some large corporations, you know, you also invest in, in public, um, you know, in municipal, um, bonds. The one thing, revenue bonds, even though the revenue stream is pledged as opposed to the taxes, um, the investors have gotten very comfortable with revenue bonds, especially if they carry a high rating, um, to the, to the point that the, um, the difference in the rate is, is very insignificant, and much more than it used to be. And then I've, I've listed, you know, the, the historical spending for the past three, three years for Public Utilities. 2018 was by far, of, of the three years, our largest spending year, so we have, you know, had a number of projects, um, going through the pipeline. 17 was 13 million, and 16 was 5.6 million. So you can see that, um, that we do have a, um, a pro, a building program going on.
Council would appreciate that. Not to have an Elmo situation here, but the 45 million were authorized GO bonds, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if we wanted to, we would have to reauthorize if we wanted to go revenue bonds, we'd have to do another bond resolution, most likely.
Another bond resolution, yes. And, um, and Davenport, um, if, um, if, if it's, um, I think, it's my understanding, they generally come this time of year to discuss, and, um, and they, um, I, I spoke with them today, and they are open to, to coming back and speaking with council.
I don't want to Elmo or confuse the issue, but the Waste Management Building that's on our agenda tomorrow night, that we're flipping to cash funding?
It's not on there tomorrow night.
That's not part of this at all?
No, that's totally different funding, no. It shouldn't be on there for tomorrow night, I thought it was the tour. All right, thanks, Mrs. Are we good?
Yes.
All right, um, our next presentation is FY 2020 Recreation and Museums Municipal Facilities Review.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, we'll have an overview of some of the completed work and some of the ongoing efforts at the city's recreation facilities and museums, and have a discussion about, um, staff recommended pass forward to get concurrents. First facility, Sportsplex. We've completed the gym renovations and utility upgrades to the, what we call the recreational parcel. Um, you were given a handout that shows the, uh, the layout of Sportsplex. Um, if you look to the east, you see two parcels. We actually consider that one parcel, the parcel that's 10.3 acres, and the parcel that's 4.55 acres, we consider that the recreational parcel. Um, that parcel has the gym and the, and the ongoing site work, which will be the parking for the gym and for the football fields that'll be included, stormwater management, landscaping, and the walking trail. Um, we're also just put out for a bit the demolition of the school building that you see in the back portion of that site, that 4.55 acres, and then there's a signage. Moving forward, um, there's additional demolitions of the other two buildings you see on the site, and a master plan for the rest of the parcel that came out of your retreat.
It's the, uh, the walking trail, where is that?
It's not there yet.
It's not on there yet?
No.
So the proposed site work improvements aren't shown, so, um, approximately right behind, uh, the gym will be football fields, um, there'll be parking, there'll be some stormwater management, and there'll be a walking trail that'll go around that entire portion of the site.
That can be part of our healthy initiative, to get everybody out there.
Question, you, um, year-to-date, how, how much resources, financial resources have we put into this project?
As far as the funding to date, I'll have to get back to you with that information.
Yeah, it's over many years.
And, and the other question, so I've, I've been out there on a number of occasions, um, and, and I think that the ongoing work is looking good. Part of my problem with, with that site, um, have you ever entered the front of it as it stands today?
Yes, sir.
Does that look appealing to you?
Um, as far as the fence and the rest of?
The fence and the guard shack, the way it's boarded up, i- it doesn't look like a very inviting facility, right now. And I understand that there may be some more improvements going on, but my, my concern is, given, given what it looks like at the initial look, I mean, I just think that something else probably, in the short term, needs to be done to the front entrance to make it more attractive and inviting, to let people know it's actually open. Because I can tell you, most people, a lot of people I talk to, don't even know that it exists. And year-to-date, I think we've spent upwards of $10 million on some of the renovations. That might be, that might be wrong, but some of the stuff I've worked.
We, we need to bring you the exact dollar figure as requested. We cannot hold it up, but it's not 10.
Okay, well, well, in the acquisition, I'm talking the total cost.
No, it's not that.
The, the cost was 3 million, so we're not, it's not even close to 10.
Okay, well, you can bring me what the costs are, but my point to this is, is this. I mean, we, this is something we're obviously going to make a, a big investment in, correct? And so, um, in making that big investment, um, again, I go back to my point, it, it needs to be attractive, and people need to know that it, it is there, so that they can begin taking advantage of it today with the, with the outlook of what it will be. So that's just my two cents, and I thought I'd share that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Kavler Manor Recreation Center. So to date, we've come, completed the facility assessment, the football field renovation, along with some parking and stormwater management. Um, ongoing right now, you have renovations to the baseball field, softball field, and practice fields, along with some additional parking and stormwater management. Um, there will also be new press box and concessions and bathrooms. Plan for the future, we have some selected, uh, building repairs and a concept or renovation plan for the existing buildings.
Questions? All right.
Okay, Joseph E. Parker Recreation Center. We've completed the facility assessment. Currently, the roof, um, is being repaired and replaced, and we have planned for the future a concept slash renovation plan.
Joseph E. Parker isn't very, Mar, what actually happens in there?
Joseph E. Parker?
Yeah, in the?
There's a gym there. There are several, um, um, activity rooms, of which, uh, programs are offered in the activity rooms. Um, it's, it's a regular.
It's, it's used?
Yes, yes.
Early, early learning.
Yes.
Early learning also.
Early learning there, and then there, there, while we have the senior, while we have the senior center, there are still seniors that have, um, centers that they like to go to. So, um, Joseph E. Park is a very active program.
It is an active center, okay. That's all I need to hear.
Right. Now, there's some coming up here, not, but we'll tell you those. Okay.
Okay, Neighborhood Facility. Um, we've completed the facility assessment, and because this, uh, facility gets well-used by the neighboring, uh, community, we're looking at a concept renovation plan. Okay, um, Port Norfolk Recreation Center. We've completed the facility assessment, um, for discussion. The status of this facility is currently closed and not in use, and, uh, consideration is to close this facility.
It's not programmed at all, and the Civic League meets there maybe every two months. I don't think that Civic League meets every month. So there is no program in there, and there has not been any program in there in over a year, almost two.
That's a pretty active Civic League. Have you had a discussion with them?
We have not, we're just, we're just proposing this, um, in discussion, but they.
So we're gonna have to find a place to meet.
Yeah, they, they don't meet, the building is only open one time for them. It's not programmed at all during the day.
I get that, but I think in the, we need to have that transaction between the city and Civic League.
We will, we will.
You know, my only concern with that is when, when something's closed up, it, it tends to become a, a blighting influence.
Maybe something we can take down.
Maybe not in the first year, the second year, but 10 years from now, uh, the, the place will be sitting there decaying.
I don't.
So I, I agree with the mayor, I think we need to touch base with the Civic League. To, to me, the, the room and, and the facility there is, uh, pretty decent looking.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and it may be some other uses that we would need to explore before we put a close sign on the door.
The program is that the building has not been operational. The program is that the building has not been operational. Pretty much when I came in 2015, the building was not programmed. It is closed, it is used for the one time. And I think that Civic, I don't know if they meet every month, but Parks and Recreation has not programmed that facility in some years for programs. They had no engagement of the public or being a part of the program.
Maybe not for programs, but I was just there. As a matter of fact, some of us were just there for a candidate form a few months ago back in November. Their facility looked pretty good. I guess my question is, could there be some other uses there for seniors, Civic League that currently uses it instead of just closing it up?
We did not bring back tonight, we had a session with council with the detail of every building, what its issues were. Those are not here, but we can bring that back to you to address what the issues are with that building in terms of the facility maintenance that needs to take place.
I think we need to structure a public participation process so we don't end up with a forty-five Afton Parkway situation. Absolutely. Where we close it and to the, to the community, that neighborhood, it's like we're not paying attention to them. And I think that we need to get-
From the outside or from a, somebody that doesn't know anything about construction, it appears in pretty good shape.
Yeah, but it's not in to a Civic League meeting. Right. We'll bring that back so you all can see exactly what we brought, presented to you all before.
But let's say you bring it back and your recommendation is that the building's too far gone because of all these things, be cheaper to tear it down and build a new facility. That same presentation needs to be made to that neighborhood, to the Civic League, before we vote it up or down. And so what we're asking, and do we have a consensus that in addition to bringing us back the analysis of what the bones of that building are, bring back a citizen's participation process for this too, so that we have a robust way of getting citizen input and buy-in.
Well, and to the mayor's point, I think that's a great idea and we definitely, whatever we do, we want to get citizens' buy-in. But I'll remind everyone at our retreat that we just had, we talked about best practices, doing things that are efficient. We may have to change some of the things that we used to do that may not be applicable anymore and that might, that just might refer to some of the things that we've done in the neighborhoods. And if we're going to make this city the city that we desire it to be, we may at some point have to make some of those tough decisions that mean that we consolidate some of these locations so that we can serve a greater good and a greater part of our community. That's all I wanted to share.
That's a good point, but the point is, is that there has to be citizen's participation.
Absolutely.
We are a local government and we need to make every effort to get citizens' buy-in. Tough decisions can be made in a vacuum.
Right, they cannot.
Not at all.
Okay. Do we have a consensus on asking for that?
We do.
JFK is over behind Douglas Park Elementary. We've completed the facility assessment and our first discussion is to close the facility. The two primary uses that this facility is, the voting precinct. I think there's a youth troop that meets there. Other than that, the facility is mostly unused.
Same thing. Do we have a consensus, same?
Yes, we do. And that was my question before. Councilman Moody had made his comment too. I was wondering if we had, for the ones that are going to be closed, is there some kind of study or something that will show what other purpose this site could be used for? Will that be part of it? I know we want to know what the structure of the building is. We want to involve the Civic Leagues and the community in this and we want resiliency. That's what's in our comp plan, but what other purpose can these sites be used for?
Bill, we commissioned a recreation study a few years ago. I think it'd be good to revisit that and see what that study, if any of these facilities were mentioned in it. I believe they were.
That's a 2012 study?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they are and I think we referenced it.
I think it'd be good for all the council members, me included, to-
Get a copy of it.
Get another copy of that.
Okay.
Refresh our memories. All right.
Okay, forty-five Afton Square. Facility's been assessed and up for discussion since the facility's been closed since 2013 and the study shows that the building's not suitable for occupancy. And proposed with demolishing the existing building, discussion is to construct a comparable building or develop a plan to repurpose the Kratic Fire Station.
Well, the last council discussion on this, where we asked ourselves, what do we want to do, and then we gave direction, which was to tear down the existing building and build a new building on the footprint. Absolutely. Yes. So the question is, does the council, as now constituted, still have that as the direction we want to give the city manager?
I have a question. Within the community of Kratic, wasn't there, and you all would know, wasn't there something that we built there, some type of recreation facility near the school there?
It was built by the developer of the old Kratic High School site. It was built near the middle school, but it doesn't meet the community needs and that's the problem.
Okay, thank you.
It's definitely not a replacement for forty-five. So let's see if we have-
Well, I was going to say, yes, to demolition and a new building, but I think we'd be foolish not to incorporate the Kratic Fire Station, which we hope to replace in that-
And that's why I bring it up.
Correct.
I mean, even if it's for the facade of the new building, it's a historic part of that community and it's a bigger footprint.
The problem we have, and I'm saying this for the benefit of the city manager and her team, is that the Kratic community is very much aware of the decision that we made at our retreat and they're asking us, they may not be asking you, what's the status of our building? And they're getting impatient with any day now. And so we need to come up with a concrete plan for this.
I agree. This was a discussion that we had at our retreat last year and that was where I brought the point up. We were talking about how bad off the building was and that's when I posed the question, well, wouldn't it be cheaper to build a new building? And that's when we said, oh, absolutely it would be, but the thought was they wanted to keep the old building and that was not what they wanted. So as we went last year, I believe that was consensus of everybody at the retreat last year, which I know we have two new members now, but it was to move forward with demolishing that building and building a new building on the exact site that the current building stands on, because that is a separate building from the fire station and they do not connect. It's totally separate.
And that's where I still am-
I agree.
On that decision. Okay. Are you still there at that point?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, because the property contiguous. Why wouldn't we want to look at something bigger and nicer or better to incorporate the larger footprint?
You want to respond?
Yeah, well, my opinion is, is basically when they looked at the needs of what they needed for their community center, you know, it was on that footprint. And part of the problem is, is why we're moving away from that fire station is that building has some serious structural problems with the building.
That may be.
And I think that's why, because, you know, I've been in that building and it's very dangerous to go upstairs and I'll leave it at that.
Well, that could be. If you tell me that, then I'm fine with that.
Right. That's his department.
He hasn't provided that that building was dangerous.
Right, we haven't. Can we say something?
Oh, no, I'm good with the conversation.
I just have one other question.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, privy to the conversation from the last retreat and this retreat and we're relying on our city engineer to give us the best data that we need to move forward with the structure of the building. That's what I'm relying on. So if it's of the opinion to tear it down and build all new, I'm for that. You know, sometimes you can't give the community what they may want because they not, may not have the information that we have been privileged to get from our city engineers.
Sit, please.
I guess, you know, and I'm listening and I'm trying to understand, but I guess my question is, is I understand we, the previous group made the decision to go forward and build this new facility. What happens when the next community wants a new facility? Do we build them a new facility too? I guess, I'm just trying to understand. It's a question and I think it's a valid question, but I just need some understanding.
Yep. Well, I think the missing piece here is that the community had a full-blown recreation complex in conjunction with the old high school. As a matter of fact, I think the price tag on that was right at a million dollars.
It is three.
So when the Afton Greens Project came along, obviously that was part of the high school and it was demoed. In that, it was, the community was told at that time by that council that we're going to replace that facility.
Okay.
Now, the developer was going to be, stepped up and said that they were going to build a facility. Well, that facility became more of a meeting place and I think at a cost of, I don't know, two hundred thousand that the developer picked up.
Okay.
So that was not a replacement for the rec center. Or was it facsimile for the forty-five Afton? And forty-five Afton in between that, it was closed due to some asbestos issues, ADA issues-
The structural.
And structural issues.
Okay, thanks, councilman.
It is a unique situation there.
Yes, it is. It's very unique. They had a perfectly good recreation center-
They did.
-that got torn down.
Okay.
They promised that it was going to be replaced and that promise has never materialized.
Okay.
So you're getting a consensus? I think we're getting a consensus.
I mean, I'm fine with replacing the building on the car footprint and forget that the fire station exists if it's not useful in the discussion. That's fine.
Okay.
So can I ask a question? So what we are, what council is, the direction council is giving is that we demolish the building-
Forty-five.
The building, which is all closed. And the same footprint that the existing building is, is what the replacement building should be?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Okay, City Park. Just to familiarize you with the site, you can give them a handout that shows City Park right there on the peninsula. Facility assessment's been completed, ongoing. We've just recently rehabilitated the pedestrian bridge. There's some other miscellaneous repairs that need to occur at the facility. We're planning to relocate the parking pay station to the boat ramp area to charge boaters as directed by city council at a previous meeting. And from your retreat, a master plan of potential alternatives for the golf course will be examined.
Say again the parking pay?
So automated pay station to be able to charge for use of the boat ramp.
I don't remember a discussion on that. Did we talk about this? We talked about the little, the facilities there of creating like a boater's store where they would, and this would be from the private sector, that we'd get a private person to operate it, sell amenities to assist boaters for bait, fishing tackle and what have you. But I don't recall the charging of launching your boat or paying for parking. Yeah, exactly.
It was, I guess from staff's recollection, it was to pay for use and maintenance of the boat ramp.
The launching, the court-
Let's get Nate.
Well, what I had brought up when we were discussing this before was the fact that I know in the past where we had damage to that boat ramp and everybody was complaining because the boat ramp wasn't fixed and the news was even out there and doing interviews of individuals. Every individual that news talked to was not a Portsmouth resident, they were from other cities. So what I had suggested, like some of the other cities do, is allow our citizens of Portsmouth to not have a charge to utilize the boat ramp, but possibly have a nominal fee for any other people in other jurisdictions to use it. Because just like Virginia Beach and Owl Creek, there is a fee to use that boat ramp and that doesn't matter if you're a citizen or not. But I was just thinking that could be a possible avenue of generating some funds to use towards the maintenance of the boat ramp and that way we could help a lot of the people that are using it pay for the maintenance that are not our citizens.
And I think a lot of that damage was caused by commercial-
Yeah, it is.
-use heavy trailers and boats and what have you.
There was, there was one business that used it on a very regular basis that is no longer in our city anymore, so I think that problem has gone away.
Well, and, but to speak to that point, they were, that particular, eight particular businesses like that was never in our city. They had out-of-state license tags using a SEMA, pulling a huge, huge trailer, boat trailer, that was essentially a pier building device. But we never had, I mean, to your point, I remember that part, but we never talked about charging for parking. And so I think we need to have, if that's what you're recommending, we need to hear the proposal. We need to have a discussion about that.
That's what, this is here, mayor. There has been no decision made. This is just possibilities for council to discuss.
It might be nomenclature when you say park, pay station.
That's the building that got run over.
Is there a pay station out there?
Now, they're talking about the building near the boat ramp.
There's not really a pay station. We have a pay station that has limited use that can be relocated. There has to be means to collect the funds.
The one thing I don't see on there that needs to be addressed is that retention pond. There's no aeration out there in the summertime. It really smells. It tends to dry up. It's not a tidal body of water. And in fact, that came up maybe last summer, summer before last.
It used to have one.
But something needs to be done with that. Either aeration or fill it in. Friendship Park is a piece of that as well. That hasn't been kept up the way it should. So that we are all talking about the same building. There were two small buildings, one at the entrance that got hit by a car and that's no longer there. There's kind of a dockmaster's building and that's the building that you're referring to, that you approach right before you get to the ramp that sits on the right. So that's, you're calling that the parking pay station?
Well, there, we have a automated pay station that we use at the garages in our surface lots that has not as much use. We relocated somewhere in that area.
But I'm telling you all, the council hasn't had a discussion about charging for parking.
You haven't.
On that lot.
I don't think she said that.
I'm saying you haven't. This was just appeared today for discussion.
She just threw it against the wall to see if we would discuss it.
It's just, I mean, these are just twenty considerations.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to talk about it.
Got a question. Since we're talking about this, that parking pay station, since we already have that, talking about relocating it, could that be reconfigured and used for the people paying to use the boat ramp as opposed to actual parking?
But that's what, that's what the intent would be.
Okay, all right, that's, okay, for the same. Great.
Instead of a pay station, I thought it could be made into a boater amenity station to sell fishing gear, things that boaters get to the ramp.
That's what you wanted us to consider.
And all of a sudden, they forgot something.
Go out for RFP.
Like I used to.
That's what we would have to do and that's what we could do.
Yeah.
Right.
And I love Nathan's idea about the pay if you are not a citizen.
And just to piggyback on Bill's point about having somebody out there.
Dockmaster.
The, well, it's, for example, like what we have out at Lake Kahoon. It's city property, a city place, but it's a private contractor, has an agreement with the city that rents boats, sells bait and all that type of stuff that's on city property. So something like that is kind of what Bill's talking about. I think would be a great idea.
I agree.
That's what we've got.
All right, so let's peel back where we are. We have a consensus that, and this needs to be memorialized in the budget because we'd have to enact that as part of our fees, that we'll have a boat ramp fee, a boat ramp fee for out-of-town people.
For non-Portsmouth residents.
Okay. So you need to come back with what you recommend that fee to be for us.
And is it commercial or residential? Maybe rather.
Okay.
Well, I think the recommendation ought to include whether or not we allow commercial launching there, whether they live in Portsmouth or not. launching there, whether they live in Portsmouth or not, because that can, that has the biggest wear and tear on the ramp.
It, it is posted, there is a sign currently there that says not to be used for commercial. And the sign's always been there, but I don't know that there's an ordinance that our police department can write them a summons for it, so that might be something we need to look at, a way to enforce it, because the sign already exists.
All right. Do we have a consensus that we ask the city attorney to look into that?
Sure.
Sure.
And our boaters already pay, what, business license, boat license or something, so we're saying not much, right?
Exactly.
So, I'm thinking, you know, I mean, I love our residents too, but I think if anybody's going boating, that everybody should, should pay something, maybe, you know, ports of residents pay a little bit less, or, you know, maybe if it's $5 and, and $10, or $10 and $20 or something, you know, because, you know, I don't know how we get it, but I guess when we get to the discussion of it, we can, we can look at that. But, I think if anybody's boating, then everybody should, should pay.
Well, it needs to, needs to be thought out of how you're gonna charge them.
It has to be.
We know who the boaters are, if they're paying, which they do, pay, pay tax, was it 50 cent on the, on the dollar? But, may, maybe we could furnish them when they apply for that and pay that, a decal or something.
Yeah, something that.
Because if you don't, you're gonna have a line backed up, people having to show that they're Portsmouth residents and what have you.
Right, exactly.
Plan needs to be developed.
Years ago, it was easier for us when we had the city decals, because when we went out there, we could tell who was Portsmouth, who was not, because they had a city decal on the windshield. But, since those are gone, somebody would have to run the license plate of the vehicle and see if the vehicle was registered to address the city of Portsmouth.
And I could bring Sister Susie's boat.
Yeah.
Sister Susie lives in Wakefield, now bringing her boat and saying, oh, it's mine.
It's Portsmouth.
Develop for such.
All right.
Look it.
Do you all have clear direction?
I think we do. We're, we're, we will be coming back, we'll be coming back. Well, first, we will, I'll have staff to look at and develop a, a plan for consideration on how we would go about with voting fees for.
But, to be clear for us, Lisa has brought up a concept which is different from what we first said, that we were gonna just charge out of Portsmouth residents.
Yeah.
And you want us to consider charging everybody?
Yeah.
Do we have a quick feel?
I'm happy to look at alternatives.
Yes.
I won't, just, just me talking, I won't, I won't support Portsmouth residents, boat owners that pay a boat, boat tax to launch their boat.
Well, that's, I agree with Bill, just for the fact that, my, my opinion is, is the Portsmouth residents are already paying the taxes that maintains that public park. So, that's why I was suggesting that we only charge people that live outside of Portsmouth, because that's a benefit, they're already paying for the park's existence. I wouldn't want to charge our residents more to use it.
Do you pay to play tennis? Because you pay to play golf.
You pay to play golf.
Everybody.
Yes, for the non-hold golf course, you pay.
Yeah, everybody.
Paul.
I see both sides to the issue.
Well, do you have a preference? I see both sides.
Well, we could go up on the boat tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, rest of it is a confusing matter.
Well, there's nothing wrong with listening to an alternative plan.
That's fine. But, let's, let's get a sense of where we are, because if there's enough votes, we may not even waste the time.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I agree with the assessment that we don't charge our residents. Outside folks, we can, we can make that happen, but not our folks that are local.
Well, I can lean to that, you know, I just, I mean, you know, considering the boat tax, I just was thinking fair and equitable for, for everyone who, who does the sport, you know, so I can withdraw my, my comment, I just wanted to put it out there on the table.
Okay.
8206 High Street, there's been a limited building assessment. There's some minor HVAC repairs that need to be made, but ongoing right now, we have plans to relocate the visitor's center and a temporary relocation of the Naval Shipyard Museum and Police Administration.
That's the former Sports Hall of Fame, that's the address.
206 High Street is which?
Sports Hall of Fame.
Is the naval museum.
It's the, it's the former.
Sports Hall of Fame.
Sports Hall of Fame, but relocated.
But, what's, what's the status of the naval?
It is temporarily open right now, but as we shared with you in our presentation, a major work that needs to be done there. And in working with Mrs. Perry, I can't, there, I would say there are hundreds and thousands of artifacts that are in that building. And in order for her to actually really deal with all of those artifacts and what is supposed to be with Portsmouth, what should have been, should have gone back after a period of time, having her to be able to temporarily work in 206 High Street to kind of make that determination and get some of those things sent back that need to be sent back or whatever, it's a, it's a massive process that has to be done with all that is in the building, and those things have to be protected, you know, heat, cold, whatever. Right now, we have heaters.
Convertible heat.
Heaters in there, but that's a, that's a major cost to have those heaters in that building. There is no air nor heat in that building.
But, right now, the building is open?
Yes.
Okay. Bill? And the reason why I ask that, because it gets a lot of buzz on social media, I don't think many people know that it's open.
I will get the schedule out as to when the timeframe that it's open, Mr. Moore.
One of those nice Mr. Pace little square things on social media.
Yeah.
Open these hours would be really great.
Okay.
Just, that's inside. That used to be the third block of High Street when Middle Street was open.
Is that the address?
No, we meant, no, Middle Street is open, so it is the second block.
Yes. Because 300 was on Tana Guard.
Yeah, Tana Guard.
That's right.
Knew that one.
Can I ask a question? So, if, if I'm understanding that, that slide correctly, what, what's recommended is the, at 206 High Street, is the relocation of the visitor's center?
There's no recommend, there's no recommendation here, these are just things that are ongoing currently that the city.
Oh, they're, they're relocating it now?
Reported, reported to city council.
Just reporting to us options.
Okay, okay.
Sports with Art and Cultural Center, facility assessment is almost complete. They're currently doing a cultural feasibility study to look at all the exhibits and exhibit space to determine how things are gonna, how and should be programmed in the future. Up for discussion is the location of the future facility. The 1846 Courthouse, which is a part of this complex, is on the register.
Mm-hmm. Location or use?
Yes, we're just looking at possibilities, if in fact, 80, 20, what is the address, 206 High Street?
Now, this is the cultural art center.
No, go back to the other one. Entire, just, just visioning 206 High Street, what is the future of that building? Is there a possibility that that can become a major cultural arts center that encompasses the museums, naval museum, cultural arts center? You know, that's just visioning.
Right.
And if that was to happen, then what would happen to, is that what you're saying, then what, what would be your vision here?
Right, would, yes.
I still stand by my question, shouldn't location be use? What's the future use of that building if we relocate?
Oh, yeah, not the location. Yeah.
Yeah, future use.
Future use.
That's what my.
Yeah, future use of the building, that's what it should be.
I mean, the use.
We're not gonna move real.
No, you can't.
You know, I always hear that the Naval Shipyard has a lot of things that we could have in a naval museum.
Yes.
And, you know, we talk about attracting visitors to Portsmouth, but we, we have a wonderful naval history.
We do.
And unfortunately, a lot of it's been tucked away in that little.
It is.
Undersized building. So, you know, just throwing that out, you know, this building has a lot of square footage. Maybe that could be a site of a larger naval museum. But, we, we need to take advantage of that.
Everything.
I mean, the existing naval museum, you go in there, you get claustrophobia. All the displays are jumbled up, and the aisles are narrow. So, we need to be looking larger.
Right.
To display naval artifacts.
Do a study.
And I think, I think the shipyard would be more than willing to loan us those on a consignment in a facility that is worthwhile to display them.
I like that. I like that.
Yeah.
A lot of none here, it's there.
Yes.
I think that'd be perfect for the location.
I do too. I do too. Mrs. Dusen, too.
Okay, the Lightship Museum, although this is not the picture for Lightship Museum.
Yeah.
The facility assessment's ongoing. The museum has a number of, number of issues, environmental issues inside, dealing with HVAC that needs to be replaced and repaired to maintain it. It actually is a ship, not necessarily a building, so it needs to be, be maintained in such order. Once again, it's also on the register. It has limited, limited visitation, and so the question is, what do we do with facility buildings?
What is its future?
Right.
If anybody has seen it, it, it's, it has deteriorated. The exterior is in the past, I don't know how many, I don't know when the last time, or years ago when it was painted, or it's.
2006.
2006 was the last time, according to Mr.
It isn't gonna go away unless you dynamite it.
You can't, it can't go away. I guess the question, or where the, we could have staff to explore, it is a, there's a marker down there, say it is on the National Historic Registry. And with that, can the building be somehow preserved, remain there?
Sure.
Exterior, what, all of the things that are in there would have to be dealt with properly. So, that's just, what is, what are the next steps? It can't continue to just deteriorate. And how do you caps, how can it be encapsulated to save it for the next, whatever, years? What, what can be done with, with that ship?
Well, to answer your question directly, if we're gonna keep it, then we ought to maintain it. We ought to do what's important to do to keep it maintained. It is unique. I have been in that ship for once a year for the last three years, and it's pretty unique.
It is.
We have docents who can give a, a real, real good history of, of the ship, what it played, the role it played in the Coast Guard, its namesake Portsmouth. The question is, do we want this as part of our museum offerings? And if we do, then we need to maintain it.
I agree.
It hasn't been maintained over the years. Does need to be.
To me, that's the threshold.
That's right.
What, what is that? I think it's important to know what, what resources are required to really keep it maintained, maybe not to A-plus level, but to better than C. And if, and if we do that as part of a, that big vision picture of a Naval Shipyard Museum and the other histories of Portsmouth to include our Coast Guard heritage in addition to our Navy heritage, there may even be a Coast Guard group. You might use it in helping us with that.
Adopting.
Federal funding.
Not to muddy the water, but remember the Coast Guard Cutter Ingram, which is a floating museum that's in Florida. And the foundation approached Portsmouth some years back about bringing it here and having that cutter here, like the cutter in the Inner Harbor of Baltimore.
I think they're still looking for it.
I think they are.
Okay. Look at all the options.
Look at that face.
I'm just looking. I didn't, I just looked up. I didn't have any expression. All right, so, the direction here is that we need to have staff to look into exactly what is it that could bring this ship back up to its standard.
Yeah, is it $5,000, is it $500,000?
Right, or whatever, with air conditioning and all, because the air conditioning is about to fall off the platform.
Do we need to call our shipyard friends and say, help us with the painting or whatever? You know, that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do.
We'll get some direct, we'll, we'll come back with a plan. It's not going anywhere anytime soon.
Well, maybe the Port Authority grant next time needs to be for the Lightship Portsmouth.
And let's be realistic, I mean, Kimball Brainshores, that has 39 residents, replaced its air conditioning system, and didn't even cost $12,000 to do, so let's not, that's much smaller. We're talking about probably just replacing the plant, not the duck park.
Right. Well, I don't know, but we'll get it, we'll get, we'll look at it.
Elizabeth's comment about exploring the, the grants that the port offers, could, could use it to refurbish the, the Lighthouse Museum. Can it for the Portsmouth grant?
Mm-hmm. We'll ask.
That's a good suggestion.
Might be a great appropriation.
Lightship, Lightship.
Right.
Okay. We've got where we need to go.
Okay, the Portsmouth Color Community Laboratory Museum, ongoing. There's landscaping that was awarded, the weather caught us, that'll take place in the spring, and some window replacement and proposed is some additional site work. And they do have their own budget for that work in our CFP. And lastly, the Children's Museum, they have a funding drive for their exhibit replacement and renovations. We're looking into elevator replacement, and then propose, once the funding drive is complete, to go through with the project of the exhibit replacement and renovation that's being done through the foundation.
Questions?
Ask them all. You got them all, Ian.
I have a, I have a comment. I want to thank you, Mr. Wright, for putting this together, and, and I did want to agree with Bill on talking about 206 High Street. You know, High Street is, to me, High Street is the heartbeat of our city. When you come into it, if you're taking the ferry over, and I think it would be a great location for a visitor's center, for a museum, I mean, that's the ideal location. Everything's already there, we have the conference room there, we have the auditorium there where people can come and speak about the different exhibits, and we also have a room there where we could feed people and have different events. So, I think that Bill's idea of making that a museum, and in addition to that, I would recommend that we consider moving our welcome center there, because that's where people get off and they come right down the main corridor and touch our city. So, I think that's a wonderful idea, man.
I think we're all in agreement with that. That's part of the reason why we bought the building.
Great job, guys.
Okay, our next presentation will be 2020.
We need to take a break.
Yeah.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Square.
Back in order. Hi, Pat.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, Mrs. Gloria Washington, our board officer, will come forward with FY 2020 review of fees and rates.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, and members of city council. Tonight, I will be presenting fee and rate benchmarking data, which is instrumental in decision-making for the upcoming 2020 budget process. This is a follow-up to the presentation to city council on Monday, February 11. The areas noted on the slide are factors utilized during the budget process for the consideration of various rate and fee structures for the city. We have reviewed and analyzed cost recovery. We have reviewed methods to provide quality service delivery to maximize efficiency and minimize costs, reviewed capital projects and debt service requirements, looked at current and upcoming legislation, and compared rates to other localities. Again, this criteria ensures that all of our data has been evaluated to ensure. Again, this criteria ensures that all of our data has been evaluated to ensure maximum cost recovery of services and minimizing costs to our citizens. This chart is a comparison of annual tax impact for FY 2018, 2019, and has been included in our budget document for several years. Included in this comparison are all consumer-based taxes, fees and rates, to include real estate, personal property, restaurant, emissions, stormwater, residential refuse, et cetera. You will note that, even though with Portsmouth having the highest real estate and personal property tax rate, because of the median household, the median household data, which is the home value, it's just probably hard to see, of 169,000, with all of our rates, we're still the lowest compared to our other peer localities regarding consumer-based taxes. The next lowest comparable is the city of Hampton. You will also note in this chart that for Portsmouth, the taxes as a percent of income, we are comparable with Norfolk at 6.5%, with Chesapeake being the lowest at 5.1%. And one of the factors for that is because they don't charge for residential refuse fees.
Say that again?
They don't charge for residential refuse. Somewhere else they are getting it.
No, we did some investigation, I think they did, in prior year in 18, but then they pulled that back, and so I guess they consider it as part of their tax rate structure.
Now that we're on that subject, the tipping fee has gone down, correct?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, it is. We haven't changed our refuge collection fee in several years.
We've changed it, when did we change it? We changed it in 17 or 18. Yes, we did.
We did. It has lowered.
It's lower.
Yes, sir.
Significantly lowered, because we had a significant...
What did we change, about $2 or $3?
I'm trying to take this.
What was it?
I recall.
Okay.
But it was lower significantly.
It was in 2017, council approved.
But we can go back and research that for you.
The tipping fee went from 125 to around 62.
Correct.
So, that's almost at 50%. We haven't had a 50% reduction in our refuge collection fee.
No, not a 50%.
My point is, is that the tipping fee, that's a huge cost of refuge collection, has been decreased by 50%. Our corresponding reduction in our residential collection fee is not even close to 50%.
Commenting the reduction in tipping fee, one of the previous presentations we had, has that not taken effect yet? I know it's happening, but I didn't think it was going to take effect until July.
It's taken, it's twofold. It's taken effect last year, and this year, too.
What is the tipping fee right now?
It's about 60, I think 65, somewhere in the 63, 65 range.
You're, let me state it another way. Are you projecting a fund balance, a surplus of revenue over expenditures for this fiscal year in refuge collection? Can you check?
I'm looking at our Director of Utilities, and she's over that front, and she's saying not at this point, but we need to, we need to look at that.
We'll look at it.
We'll look at that.
My point is, is that we might have a place where we can, because that's an enterprise fund.
Yes, it is.
Bring the fee down. And we might be, it's still a good deal.
Even with all the investment we made for recycling, which is a part of that, we bought a lot of equipment and obviously, that happened.
Mayor, let us look at it, and we will be coming back, and we'll discuss it at our next meeting, with some things back. But this is what will be published.
Yeah, that's... Bill? Speaking of recycling, is recycled materials that we're putting on the curb, are they actually being recycled now?
You won't answer that, Ash.
It's...
No.
And I will answer my own question, because I hear that they aren't, due to the market, bottom falling out of the market, mainly because of China. It's not important anymore.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, we do have a contract in place for recycling. However, and we also, as a city, obtained sponsored legislation to address the China market issue. Out of that legislative initiative, we're getting a letter to have DEQ take a look at the recycling requirements across the Hampton Roads district. But the expectation and the plan and the contract in place is to recycle. The reality is, the market makes it very difficult, so the amount of materials that are subject to be recycled is decreasing. There's definitely pressure on that. And in that same vein, let me say, over the last few years, while our tipping fee did go down, of course, our renegotiated recycling rate went up. So, there may not be a net, I don't know where it nets out, but that's been the trade-off in order to deal with the issues over in China with regard to recycling.
Please understand the nature of my question. I mean, people, our citizens are informed, and when they see a 50% reduction in the landfill tipping fee, they're not shy in asking those questions about, "Why am I refugees?" So, it's not a, it may sound like a goofy question, but there's a reason behind it. We need to be able to tell our citizens.
Of what the cost and what we can do.
Looking at the water utility tax, four of the seven cities charged zero, and three of the remaining seven charged fees, with Portsmouth being double and twice, doubling three times that of Norfolk and Virginia Beach. Why is that? Why is...
From here, can you answer that, please?
Actually, I can't speak to why we're more than triple the other ones. The utility tax is a monthly bill, and there's a limit, actually, to what the utility tax could be given on any bill. But each locality is set up very differently on how they generate revenue from a public utilities. Some have fixed minimum requirements, that it's, you pay X until you consume so many gallons. Others have tiered structures, so it's all very independent of each locality, how those rates are structured.
But that would be reflected in the bottom line number, because that is the, that impacts the water rate. Your question is really one for council, whether or not we want to continue to be the highest utility tax, and that's what that is, or reduce it in some fashion. That's a tax that goes to the general fund, not to the utility fund.
Right. Mayor, Mr. Luther, please.
On the recycle, I want to revisit that again, because if there's consensus, I would like to see what our cost, our net cost, is on our recycling operation. And also, I think we need to know if any, I know we got a contract, but that doesn't tell you anything where the material is going to. But we need to know if it's actually been recycled, because if it's not, we're just fooling ourselves and costing our citizens money for a service that they aren't getting. I don't have any problem with that. Can I translate what I've heard?
Okay.
We have a contract with a contractor for recycling. That's RDS, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Bill's question is, whether or not RDS is actually selling the material as a recycled material. Is he selling the paper? Is he selling the plastic? Or is it going to a cheaper alternative, which would be the landfill? Landfills are always the cheapest alternative. If it's going to the landfill, it might as well go to our RDF facility and be recycled in the fuel.
Yeah.
At least it's being recycled. We took a beating, as a municipal corporation, as a political body, two years ago, when this very thing came up, which was out of our control, which was, the contractor says, "I can't recycle it because I don't have the market, and it's going to cost more for that short period of time where the stuff at our blue cans went to the RDF." We took a political beating on that. And we need to get in front of this, if it means that we need to have periodic discussions about international recycling market, so that if it happens again, our citizens know.
That's fair.
And I'm like Bill, if we're paying the contractor to pick it up, and it's being landfilled, that's not recycling.
Well, it's not. We might as well take it to a elevator ourselves.
That's right.
And actually recycle it.
And use it.
Exactly.
Get rid of the blue cans and get two black ones. I mean, I just say, get rid of the blue cans and get two black ones, you know?
Keep it plain, keep it simple.
Alright.
This is just a recap of what was presented on February 11th, again, to show what our peer localities, some of our major real estate taxes. Again, seeing Portsmouth at $1.30, the lowest is Virginia Beach at 1.0025. Our personal property is the highest at $5, again, Virginia Beach. Chesapeake's the lowest at 4.08. Cigarette tax, we're among the highest. Norfolk is at 95 cents. Portsmouth's at 90 cents. And then the meal tax, again, we're at 6.5% with our neighbors across the border at 7.5 and 7.5, and the lowest being Chesapeake and Virginia Beach. Again, we talked about in the prior session about the hotel occupancy tax, where we don't provide that as a tax at this point for the city of Portsmouth. And looking at that per $1, it would generate about $120,000 in new revenue.
And the way that tax is imposed, it's $1 per room?
Yes, a flat tax per day.
Probably per day.
Per day. And then on the meals tax, it can maybe go up about 1% again, and that's about 1.3 million.
I think this is the time for us to kind of voice our political positions, so the manager has some idea. I'm not going up on the meals tax. I'll tell you right now, that I think that we should be doing things to make it very attractive to eat in Portsmouth, eat cheap.
I agree.
I agree.
I don't have any problems on the cigarette tax going up, understanding that every time you go, the amount of revenue goes down.
But it helps sales.
I will say, last year, when we were at VML Day, discussion of the meal tax had come up in other jurisdictions, and a lot of restaurants did not like the idea of increasing the meal tax. But after it was implemented, they didn't have no, they didn't have any kind of drop of people, you know, at their restaurants, eating meals, and they were using other localities to bring in some other revenue, that they used some of their increase towards their schools. And that was something that, when we had that discussion up there, and the fact that somebody else had already done it, and it had no negative effect on the businesses, and the thought process being, there's a lot of people that come and eat in our city are not residents, so we're bringing in some other revenue from the area that aren't just our citizens. And hearing that report from VML, it sounded very positive to me, that there was no negative impact on the businesses, and it was another source of revenue that they chose to use for the schools, and I thought that was a pretty good idea they had.
That's a very good point. But the thing is, is that there's no toll between Charlottesville and Alamo County, no toll between Richmond and Reiko. There's no toll between...
Increase the hotel tax and use it for tourism, and let people come and eat because of tourism.
Yeah, restaurants have already taken a hit due to the tolls. And I think it's as much a perception problem here. I mean, there are restaurateurs in Portsmouth who feel that, first, we got the highest meal tax in the state, which is not true.
No, we don't.
And if they don't know, then who would know? But that's a very, very good point. But I think because of the fact that we have tolls, we need to keep the tax. How do you all feel about the hotel occupancy tax?
We need to throw a dollar up there.
$3.
We need to throw something up there.
I'm alright.
I'm fine with something. I wouldn't go to, I'll sell you $3.
I'd say a couple dollars.
Yeah, I could go to $2. Looking at the...
Our comparison is across the river.
But I want it to go towards our museum, fine arts, tourism, whatever that bucket's called, because that makes sense.
I agree with it. I agree with the $3, because Norfolk's across the river from us, and the other side of it, everywhere I've ever gone to on a vacation, I've never looked at what their occupancy tax was. You get the bill, you pay it. It didn't stop me from visiting wherever I was going. So, people are going to go to the hotel, they're going there anyway, that $3 is not going to bother them.
New York City, 18% at least.
Right. So, I have no problem with that.
How much revenue does that generate?
Per $1, it's 120,000. So, if we did, say, $3, it'd be about 360,000. $2 would be 240,000 recurring revenue.
Any other discussion on this?
And which one do you say bring in 1.2 million?
It's the meals tax.
The meal tax.
The 1%. I remember when I was in another locality, they actually did an alignment with their neighboring city to go up on the meal tax rate, and you're right, they were talking about dedication, education, and other components.
And I'm on record with Nate with that increase, because we did get that information from VML, and if it would go to education, that would be my plus.
Any other discussion? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is public utilities comparisons, and again, these are just fees for considerations, not recommendations. The recommendations will actually come out in the city manager's proposed budget, but we're only looking at the fixed meter rates, and we're one of the lowest average fee structure of our six pure cities. The fee adjustment consideration is based on conformance to American Waterworks Association standard practices, long-term costs of maintaining and replacing lines as necessitated by emergencies, or capital improvement plans, and increasing regulatory costs of delivering. And there was a general restructuring, I believe, in 2017, but it did not include the fixed meter rate restructuring.
Alright, discussion on this. Everybody's aware of the fact that there's a return on investment that the public utilities, our public utilities gives to our general fund, and it's not a small amount of money. I have a hard time going up on the rate just to feed the general fund, which in effect is what we're doing. I could listen to an argument that would say, cut back on that transfer, that transfer, because what you're doing is transferring, I'm not going to say profit, the difference between expenditures and revenues to the general fund. I'd rather hear an argument that says, "Cut that back and let the general fund be funded by what it should be funded by, not a subsidy from the utilities."
Been doing that for 100 years.
No objection here. That is a sizable amount.
Pardon me?
That is a sizable amount, that's a return on investment, yeah.
And we have to be concerned about defending that.
We would have to, if that's, if we were pulling that from the general fund, you're right, we would create a gap, that we'd have to try to identify new recurring revenue to continue to balance the general fund.
We don't want to be in a situation where we're forced to do it by some court. And I'm not talking about a state court.
I'm not following what you're saying there. The funding that's coming from public utilities over into...
General fund.
The general fund, that the city has done for probably the last 20 years or more?
Longer than that.
Well, 50 years. So, what are you saying?
What I'm saying is that it's very... What I'm saying is that it's very hard to justify, both to your customer and to people who may end up regulating this, and need to have that much of a transfer.
Right, okay. So in all these years, it was never, ever...
Oh, yes, it has. It's been challenged.
No, not challenged, but reduced.
It has been reduced, but not by much. What is that amount, 8 million?
It's about 8 million. That was the amount in '98, or, I mean, I remember when Jim Spasit was here. It's been that amount for a long time.
Yeah.
It's, we put a big gap in the general fund.
Yes.
A big gap.
I hear that.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think we should tell, try to keep a straight face and tell our water customers, "We're going up because of these things," when we're creating a surplus that goes into the general fund to the tune of 8 million dollars.
That supports it.
You know, and I can't keep my face that straight.
Well, I guess I have a question to your point. If I'm misunderstanding, correct me, but is, what we're talking about, the question of water that we own, for example, right?
Water what?
The water that we own. The water that, is that part of the utilities? Is that what we're talking about?
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, so, okay, I just wanna make sure I'm on the right page. So that's an asset that we have as a city, is that correct?
But the question is, what do we sell it for?
I understand that. I'm getting to my question. I may not go as fast as you, but I'm getting there, so follow me. We have an asset. We take our asset to market. We have something to sell that other people need. It's not unlike any other asset that you would have. What's wrong with us making what we make from selling of the asset that we have?
You have to understand the environment. One has to understand the environment in which we set the rate and sell to both residential, commercial, and industrial customers. They're all not the same.
Okay.
And that's where the pitfall is.
Okay.
Because in certain situations, you cannot make that type of profit.
Okay, understood.
I'll be glad to have a sidebar conversation.
Well, we can sit down and talk about it, because I need to understand, because I'm missing some of the discussion that you said. You said, "Make the argument."
Talking in code, I'll be the first to admit that.
Okay, well, that's, I don't understand code. So we'll have a sidebar about it.
Exactly, Bill.
There have been court cases where localities have lost that argument.
Well, I think we should be informed by our attorney, possibly at a closed session, about what's happened at other places so we can make an informed decision.
But it's been public.
Right, but I'm talking about as far as our discussion, that we can be advised by our attorney.
And maybe you can try something like, "Let's do this for two years, and it'll automatically go back at the end of the two years to..."
They mean the capital budget is critical.
Sounds that way. So the question, one of the lowest average fee structures of peer cities, so we're asking that we increase our average fee structure, but we don't know what that is or where we are.
This is considerations right now, and it's various fee structures. And so, again, we're just presenting this information before the city manager's budget to say, "These are some of the areas that we are..."
That we can find increase.
But it's also our chance to, when you come back with a point like this, to give you guidance.
Yeah.
To say, "These are the guardrails, and this is our tolerance to increase in a fee like that." We can either tell you now or do it after the budget is presented. I think it always works better if you know in advance what the guidance of counsel is.
That's what we're doing.
You have the right to say, "I heard your guidance," but I still recommend that we go higher than that for these reasons.
I'm not there yet, yeah.
Yeah. But I think it's always useful for you to know...
Right.
...that this is the sensitivity that we see as politicians.
So it's part of a political decision, too, is what you're saying?
Well, it's part of...
I mean, essentially, just being open, I mean, it's part of a political decision. I mean, we don't need to mess words about it, that's what you're saying.
It's not political in the sense that you're looking for votes, not on this issue right there. This issue has everything to do about whether or not we have the authority to do it.
Okay.
Whether or not it will be snatched from us.
Okay.
Okay. Whether or not we can look our water customer in the eye and say, "We need to go up on this rate..."
I know where we're going.
"...so that we can continue to put 8 million dollars into our general fund." I understand what happens if you take that 8 million dollars out. That's more than 10 cents on the tax rate.
That's right.
I get that. But we need to understand it, too. We need to understand the pitfall. And when you read that, oh, okay, we gotta go up. Well, no, we don't. There's another alternative to that.
Do you mind, since we right here, can we go back one slide to the comparative tax rates?
Enough, let's move on.
The one before that, after that.
Yes.
Comparative tax rates, yes. The real estate tax rate for Portsmouth, was there some language that says that if that amount increased, that we get less funds from the state, the CPI?
For schools?
Just funding that the state gives you when our tax rate increase in real estate area.
I'm not aware of it.
I'll take a look, but...
Oh, on the personal property, only 50%?
Yes, right. I know that when that rate increased, and I thought it was in the real estate area, the funding that we get from the general assembly from the state was taken back because the tax rate went up. And I'm not sure what that is, the CPI or...
Look it up, I'm not aware of it.
Why you got that? When we talked about our tolerance for the meals tax, that's political and it's not political. So I think it's really important, given the fact that if we want people coming to eat in our restaurants, particularly east of here, that we need to recognize that they've gotta pay a toll to get to our restaurants. And we're hearing from our owners and operators of restaurants that tolls are killing us. I think we need to be sensitive to that. We need, part of our job is to create the environment for the businesses to survive and sustain. Call that politics, call it economics, it's a blend of both.
It is.
Relative to this slide, the assessor has been working with a group of wheeltors interested in selling homes in Portsmouth with me and Mr. Moore's team for a few months now. And one of the things that none of us thought of, and, you know, the wheeltors are trying to learn how to overcome some of the negatives that they hear from people coming into the community to buy homes. You look at Portsmouth at $1.30, and it's $1.30 whether you're in Churchillan or Oldtown or Cavalier Manor or Craddock. You look at Suffolk at $1.11, and that looks very enticing. But they have bid districts and TIF districts in Harborview and other locations that take it way over that. Norfolk has a bid rate in their downtown area that takes theirs to $1.45. Virginia Beach has five of those districts. So Billy's doing a great job of trying to narrow down where some of those districts are. So if you're really thinking about a home in Churchillan versus Harborview, we're gonna draw that circle so you know whether you're really paying $1.11 plus very expensive water or $1.30, plus the price of the home is different. Don't forget that.
That's a good point. Suffolk's had two taxing districts at least from its very beginning in 1974. An enforcement taxing district and a Suffolk task district, and they're two different.
Yeah, well, it's just, if we're gonna compare, let's compare apples to apples.
That is, that's a good point.
I think, to that point, I think that's something that, you know, we need to put out, because that's something I've never heard of, but I think our citizens should be aware of that, too. Because when they always hear that we have the highest tax rate, then that's not true. It is based by location in other cities, because, like I said, I wasn't aware of that.
I speak one.
So I think it'd be good for us to put that information out, just so our people are aware of it.
It would be good to know, not to give you so much work to do, but in addition, can you speak to that issue? Can you show the various taxing districts that our neighbors have on this chart?
Yeah, we could do it.
Pardon me?
We could, yes. Thank you. Again, we're looking at parking authority comparisons, and there was some discussion previously. Again, this is parking fee considerations. It's aligning municipal parking fees to uniform hourly rates. And when we looked at the comparisons of rates, this is just benchmarking. We are lower than Norfolk at $1.50 per hour and Richmond at $4.00 per hour. So this benchmarking would try to standardize the fees for parking meters throughout the city. Again, this is just for consideration.
Do we have that many meters in the city anymore? I mean, honestly, I feel like we've taken most of them up.
It includes both the regular meters and pay stations, but our number of meters has decreased substantially since we went to pay stations.
Base stations.
Again, I'm kinda with the mayor. This is all about downtown, and it's about visitors to downtown. And I'm not all about increasing hourly parking rates downtown. I'd be more about helping people learn where to park that's not on the street. And we have it available. It's making it more attractive for them to know that there's a whole parking garage behind the restaurant they're going to.
Right.
And that employees in those restaurants and businesses have monthly parking in those garages and get them off the street so there's more space for the diner and the visitor.
Bill?
We miss the boat every time I go to a large function at the Renaissance, and nobody's charged for parking. I go to a function over in Norfolk at the Marriott, and you pay to park. Now, the parking element of the Renaissance is ours, and I think we lose a lot of revenue in the course of a year from that.
The parking contract is with...
I believe it's now with the, I believe it's with the Renaissance. I think the new owners are doing considerably better than in the past in terms of marshaling that. It's still maybe a little sketchy, but we'll come back with you and look at it and let you know what that process is.
Well, unless that changed in the new agreement, the parking was the city's revenue?
I'll double check and get back with you on that particular matter.
Okay.
Because I know it was a discussion point. We were trying to move it back and forth at the last sale.
Okay.
And one more, parking authority comparisons, parking fine considerations for areas in which we have violations for overtime or no parking violation signage. The comparison that was the best with our peers was lower than Norfolk. And again, these are just considerations that we're looking at in order to make sure we try to recover the costs for areas that are enterprise funds so that the services could still be provided to the citizens in a more efficient way.
Okay, before you move that...
Okay.
Let's find out what our interest is here.
Okay.
I'm not much interested in going up on parking fees.
I'm not either.
I'm not at all.
Nate?
Paul?
Kinda sorta related. And I know Mr. Clark and Mr. Ashby are working on this diligently, but we gotta do something about ordinances and fines and serious fines for boats that are parking too long.
Right.
Which we don't have any...
I don't disagree with that at all.
Those parking fines, we need to help.
Parking rates remain the same. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what I have with...
Stormwater management, the ERU, which is the equivalent residential unit rate. This, again, is a consideration based on complying with the MS-4 permit, resiliency efforts for sea level rise mitigation, and design and construction of more flood mitigating infrastructures. When we looked at our rates, we're mid-range among our peer cities. We are, Newport News, Norfolk, and Virginia Beach have higher stormwater rates than we do, and the lower stormwater rates are Chesapeake and Hampton.
What does an increase of something do for revenue?
We'll have to get some background. I mean, to me, that's something you can talk about because of all the sea level requirements and...
And the MS-4 permit requirements that are continuing to increase for the city.
The average citizen thinks that they don't see any benefit from that.
Federal require.
That is a totally misunderstood fee. I wouldn't support going up on it, because I don't see a lot of benefit from it, quite frankly, other than satisfying somebody else's regulation.
Excuse me.
The world's gonna end in 12 years.
What?
No, that's...
Paul's got a point.
So what are we saying? Are we saying we need to go up on taxes?
No. What they're saying is that they're recommending that we consider going up on a fee.
Right.
And Bill's expressing an opinion that he doesn't think that the fee ought to go up. I mean, this is an enterprise fund, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a deficit in the enterprise fund now?
No.
Is there a fund balance in the enterprise fund?
I would say yes. Is it...
I'm like, Bill, I can't see...
Okay, we don't know right now, so I can't answer too quickly.
But I know, I'm just thinking, in other localities, the big compliance part was making sure that with the MS-4 permit compliance, resiliency efforts for sea level rise, that they were able to have a fund to sustain those type of improvements.
That they have to do.
And I think that's why we're in the middle of the road regarding Newport News, Norfolk, Virginia Beach having the highest stormwater rates. I'm not sure if this is catch-up of that, but...
Because it's an enterprise operation, R should equal E. And if R equals E now, and E's not going up expenditures, why go up on R? I mean, let's not do it for the fun of it.
Well, we wouldn't, yeah.
Middle of the road is a pretty good position.
We'll come back to it.
Right.
Here. This is the last slide, and I think we've talked a little bit about this.
We have.
Parks, recreation, and tourism regarding the boat trail or park fee consideration. And we've been given some direction on it. Okay? All right, any other questions?
No, I just did think about it. I know the city attorney was gonna look that up for us, the composite index.
Yeah.
The composite index is what I was referring to with...
Oh, okay.
Our tax rates.
Okay, I'll get that for you.
Okay.
Okay. Finally, Mayor, members of council, the city attorney will just give you a briefing on two items that are on your agenda for tomorrow night, consideration.
on two items that are on your agenda for tomorrow night, consideration.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, Staff Committee is currently reviewing Armaud Hafler's proposal for the relocation of City Hall and the Public Safety Building, as well as the subsequent redevelopment of the waterfront area that may be vacated as a result of that project. In that discussion, we just want to make you aware that the proposal has been made public, but the proposal is the initial proposal by Armaud Hafler. It does not reflect the current discussions with the city, and does not reflect any kind of city input that the appointed staff has suggested with regard to how that proposal goes forward. Before you tomorrow is a memorandum of understanding that is non-binding and simply formalizes the city selection of Armaud Hafler, who's been determined to be an appropriate candidate, given the process thus far. The MOU is a general roadmap, but again, does not reflect the final project or any negotiations. Upon execution of the MOU, the city staff committee and Armaud Hafler will begin negotiating a more detailed development agreement, the terms of which will come before you before it is, in fact, executed. So, I want to make you aware of that particular matter.
Any questions? Can I tell you what I heard? Translate.
Sure. Oh, I, you heard, I was like, somewhere else or...
The public hearing tomorrow is a requirement of state code.
Correct.
In order for us to sign the MOU.
Correct.
So, the public hearing is about whether or not we should sign this MOU. Which is not the last step, it's only the first step, that leads to a development agreement that which would be very detailed, that would spell it out in particular, who does what, when, and how much.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct.
Bill?
Mayor, I would suggest, since this agreement, and this particular agreement will be very detail-oriented, that we get updated before the final version is presented, that we break it down in segments.
This is going forward, as you work on the development agreement, what Bill is asking for is periodic status reports to us, to give us a chance to say we're...
Looking good.
Yeah, go left, go right.
The Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I am aware that the law provides for an interim agreement, but I don't know that it, I haven't considered or taken a look at it, but I don't know about sections.
You're getting too detailed. Let's back up. Bill, Matt?
Yeah, go ahead.
What I'm hearing is... I don't mean to...
You're a good one. Go ahead.
Let's make sure that we're all going down the same way, that not half of us think that we should have taken a left turn, and you're not getting guidance. We're not saying, let us write the development agreement. That's not what we're talking about. Just bring us back periodic reports of your discussions on the formation of this development report, development agreement.
And sitting here today, Mayor, not having that question in advance, I'm aware that there can be at least one interim step. There can be a halfway point, but I don't know that there can be every paragraph, every section discussion.
Just like you come back and brief us on any project, where you're saying, we're going down the right path, and we say, yeah, or go a little bit left, a little bit right here, that's all that Bill is asking. Don't do the development agreement in a vacuum.
I certainly understand council's concern. The issue is, this process, the PPEA, is much like a procurement, and so that staff has, is not quite that same role. That's why I think the law has provided for interim agreements, but there's a distance between that and the process.
We understand that, but there's a poster child for bad results for public-private partnerships, and that is the toll ERC.
I certainly agree, Mayor, and I understand...
And the state corrected that. No longer can that just be signed by the secretary. It's got to be approved by the General Assembly. And find a way to keep us informed of what's developing. That's the request.
Absolutely.
To your point, so, under the rules, I guess, under this Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002, I read something that referred to, under the adoption of guidelines, creating a public oversight committee, and in lieu of what the mayor was talking about, I think that perhaps, we're getting ready to take on a big deal here, and it's going to be something that's probably game-changing, but it's going to cause a lot of us to pay a lot of attention to it. Under the rules that I read, that was from this agreement that was created, you can create, in order to protect the public's interest, an advisory or oversight committee that is made up of public officials and other city leaders, business leaders. Is that something we're going to do in this process? We intend to do in this process. I'm not sure what you're referencing, so we'd have to talk about that offline. I'll send it to you. Okay.
Look at the procurement.
I'll send it right to you.
Okay, next.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, tomorrow, you will, members of City Council, you will also have in front of you a ordinance with a wireless facilities franchise agreement involving New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. This would be the third, I believe, wireless agreement in about two years. I certainly have some information that I can provide to you all to get the new members of council up to speed, but I wanted to make you aware that that ordinance and the proposed agreement, which is standard for the city, comes before you tomorrow with regard to our third franchisee. Of course, this is a non-exclusive agreement as it relates to wireless facilities here in the city. You have approved one for mobility and one for COCs previously. I believe one in 2018 and one in 2017.
Any questions? Okay. Any other things, Dr. Bailey?
No, that concludes the presentations for tonight.
We don't have a closed session tonight?
No, we do it tomorrow night.
All right. Everybody ready to go?
Ready to go.
This meeting is adjourned.
You're here. Excuse me, I'm...